Did something as a state legislature, which we've never done before. We decided to redistrict before towns were able to reprecy. To my knowledge, that hasn't happened in the living memory of anyone on this call, although I don't pretend to know about every single thing that's transpired. That has created a lot of complications. It also gave rise to a dispute between the Secretary of State, who felt that the town should be able to go first as they traditionally have. The legislature differed with the secretary and because the legislature was in charge of ultimately writing the law, the legislative preference prevailed, which was that we would draw the House and Senate districts and the congressional district lines first, and then we would pass a special state law, one that I think Governor Baker signed three or four weeks ago, permitting towns to reprecy up until December 15th of this year. So it is an anomalous situation without a question. I put the very interesting questions that Stephen Crane has put to all of us, two members of the Senate. And by the way, I understand that a lot of these issues involve the House, but I'm certainly always work well with Representative Gueva and was interested myself in the perspective of the people whom I can consult, which are members of the Senate and their staffs. I'm sorry, did someone want to? So here's the answer I got back to Stephen's letter. The answer I got back was that legally and constitutionally, the legislature is standing firm. No mistake has been made, although all observers grant that we're facing a one-of-a-kind situation. In this particular instance, the represiting is completely separate from House and Senate redistricting. And the two do have to be treated on separate tracks, unfortunately, because of COVID and the federal census delays that occasioned, eventuated. So in this particular instance, we are in fact, by design, apparently, using the 2011 precinct lines. As a legal matter, the legislature has declared those lines to be the 2021 census artifacts on which redistricting will be based. The legislature appreciates and knew all along that reprecing on the local level would take a different course and would be based explicitly on 2020 census data. The lawyers in the legislature believe that given the extraordinary circumstances that confront all of us, this anomalous approach that distinguishes between redistricting based on 2011 data and reprecing based on 2021 data, given these situations with which we're confronted, they feel that this will is the proper thing to do and would stand up to legal challenge, legal scrutiny if for some reason that were an option. So the feedback I got, and because the questions posed were very good ones. The feedback I got was no mistake, no oversight. Everything was done intentionally to deal with a bad situation. And there is, as a consequence, this bifurcation as we go forward, redistricting based on 2011 precinct lines and reprecing based on 2021 census data. It is, it is an interesting situation. I hope that the town brings it up in the hearings being held today, and I think there's one on Monday as well, conducted by the redistricting committee. But what I'm told is that this is an issue that is familiar to members of the committee, rather than an oversight that will catch them by surprise in some way.
Thank you, Senator Barrett, for that information. And I want to turn it over to Representative Gueva. I just have a very quick question for Senator Barrett. Are there any change in the Senate redistricting? Or is Concord remaining all with you, Senator Barrett?
Concord is remaining entirely with me.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Representative Gueva, we'd love to hear your point.
Well, appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you today. Senator Barrett, I appreciate that you were able to get in touch with your Senate colleagues. I have reached out to the House Chair, have not heard back on some of the questions that have been raised here. I would imagine, and I'm wondering, Senator Barrett, if there was any more specifics, also if the precinct lines were redrawn, it would have implications for the numbers through the rest of the district, regardless of what district you're talking about. So I think that's part of what's driving this is it's, we have to look at the map as a whole, and that's been, of course, part of the major challenge. So you change one boundary line in one part, it seems like it's a great solution, but it has ripple effects, not only through these districts, but quite honestly, to a certain extent throughout the whole state. And I think that's in part what's driving why we're here today in terms of the ways that the district was or Concord was put into two separate districts. So I'm wondering if there was any specifics about that, Senator Barrett, in your conversation will help me have more informed conversations when I do hear back from the House Chair on these questions.
If, thank you, Tammy, and I would be happy to speak to that, but I want to yield, first of all, to the board, because I think we're transitioning perhaps beyond the technical question to the question overall of Concord's being divided into two House districts. I want to be sure that members of the board and members of the town government staff have an opportunity to make presentations on that point before I offer a comment. I'd be happy to comment, but I I want to do this in whatever order the town prefers.
Thank you very much. So let's do one issue at a time. Let's see if we have some questions from the Select Board or staff, questions for Tammy and Mike. Henry.
My question is, with regard to the technical issues, if it's permissible for the state redistricting to use the 2010 census information, why cannot the town use that same information for its precinct lines? It concedes that neither, in neither case, does the does the census information actually comply with, you know, the constitutional mandate that the redistricting reflect the current census? But if the state for the legislative districts can use 2010, why can not the town be congruent with that and use that same information? So at least we don't run into these impossible conflicts. But that's just a kind of a tactical issue. I think the much more important issue is not only having the town be divided into two legislative districts so that we would be served by two different representatives in the State House, and therefore, we, it makes, makes all of our relationships with the legislature incredibly complex. But it also means, strangely enough, that this district requires that three towns be divided. Concord is divided, Lincoln is divided, and Chelmsford is divided. All three of the four towns in this district, the only one that is not divided is is Carlisle. And if you look at this map and the way that district runs around the town of Lincoln, and how the two parts of Concord are connected by two narrow strips running across bridges across the river, it's, it makes gerrymandering look good.
Yeah, if I could, if I could, Henry, if I could just offer a commentary, because I I apologize if I've misspoken here. I'm drawing a very narrow distinction. 2020 data was used by the state legislature. The precinct lines are based on 2010, 2011, but 2020 data was used, and that's a distinction that, again, the State House lawyers are comfortable with. But I apologize to you if I intimated that 2010 census data, as opposed to 2010, 2011 precinct lines, have been involved in the redistricting. We are using 2020 census data. We don't concern ourselves, generally speaking, with reprecing. We concern ourselves with one person, one vote, and across the state and within each district. The objective there, of course, is to make sure that every state rep district, for example, is the same size within a margin of error across Massachusetts. Those would be 160 districts. Similarly, we're concerned, oh, I'm sorry, go on.
Well, so I think what Henry is asking is if the state is using 2010, 2011 lines, can the town also use those lines so that we are consistent? And we don't have this confusion?
Yeah. And I don't know the answer to that one, because this is not an area in which I'm generally expert. It's a, it's a very useful question to ponder, but it's not one that I can speak.
Right, I understand that. I would ask Representative Gueva and you, Senator Barrett, to go back and see if you can find out if we can do that, because at least we would have some consistency.
Yes, that's.
Now, why don't you make, why don't you frame the question for us more precisely, so we can be sure that that we research the right issue for you?
Sure, we will do that. And go ahead, Tammy, your point.
Well, and I saw that Kari also had her hand raised, and perhaps she was going to say the same thing. I thought part of the concern was that if you use the 2010 lines, then you end up with the problem of imbalance across the precincts, and that's the issue you're trying to solve. So it sounds like, and I could be misinterpreting, Terry, but it sounds like the question that you want us to go back and perhaps ask to use the 22 precinct lines. I think we already know the answer to that. I think the problem is, is that it's creating this other concern around the balance. My suspect, just based on the feedback that Senator Barrett got, at least from his Senate colleagues, and I would suspect and anticipate that it could be similar from the House side as well, once I hear back from the Chair, that we're sticking with those state redistricting lines. And within the 14th Middlesex, if you need to do some reprecing with those two precincts, like change around the boundaries, so that you have greater balance, you could do that in the 14th. And then if you needed to do the same thing in the 13th. So it sounds like maybe that's the question that may be on the table, but I'd love to hear what Kari says.
Yeah, Kari?
Yeah, it doesn't, if we don't change the reprecing line, we can't correct the imbalance of population. Because now, by putting 2020 numbers into a 2010 line, we are faced with the remaining town being out of balance. And so if we we can either recognize the imbalance and say we don't have to limit ourselves to 4,000 people, and we don't have to stay within the target population by 5%, or we need to look at the lines. Either way, it's, redistricting is affecting precincts.
Well, no question, Corey.
And representation.
Reprecing is a town function, and part of this statute that I made reference to earlier explicitly gives every city and town in Massachusetts until December 15th to reprecy. So any rebalancing that might need to be done can be done until December 15th or so. I hope I've stated that ultimate deadline correctly. But by itself, that will have nothing to do with redistricting.
Well, I think to different, Senator, I think what I'm hearing Kari saying, and I'm not sure, is if the district line holds the way it is proposed now, we will be unable to satisfy the precinct rules of the 5% that we, even if we reprecy, we won't be able to comply with that rule. Is that correct, Kari?
That's right, with, right, without splitting precincts. So redistricting is affecting reprecing.
Okay. I don't think we're going to be able to research that question. That is an exotic and important, but very complex legal question that is going to have to be left to to lawyers who know precedent and who know court-made law as well. So we're not going to be able to come back with an answer that you can go to the bank with with respect to that very interesting question. This is a unique situation. Everybody's off balance here. You guys are framing some important issues. But I, but you wouldn't want to depend on the legislature and legislative staff and whatever they tell me on a phone call.
Right, right, right. Okay, well, I appreciate your honesty. And Stephen, just hold on one second. I appreciate your honesty. And I guess I'm looking for a suggestion of what we should do between now and December 15th. Do we will there be a legal opinion by then? Can we get an extension beyond December 15th? You know, what is the suggestion? And that's going to be my question, but go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, I think I would just, I would just urge Representative Gueva and Senator Barrett, if they could talk to their colleagues about whether these types of questions can be raised during further committee deliberations and then House and Senate deliberations. And, you know, if they need something from the towns to prompt these discussions, we're happy to provide that. If this conversation is sufficient to prompt those deliberations and the people who, I think Senator Barrett, you said, asserted that the legislature is on firm legal ground and using the precinct lines from 2010, those are obviously, I think, the same attorneys you want to ask these questions to. I think the big thing is, how do we ensure that that happens during the legislative process?
The public hearing being held on Monday is your best forum. My guess is, you know, I don't, I don't do policy in this area, Steve, so I'm trying to channel the conversations that I've had with legislators and staff who do policy in this area. But this is not going to be raised effectively unless we receive something in writing from the town that is extremely precise. The letter that you wrote is an excellent starting point, but you would need to build on that. We could then go to staff with that writing and say, basically, this is a serious problem. What do you think? However, I've already, I've already floated this. I pressed your case pretty hard within the Senate. This is primarily a House issue, I realize, but I certainly have wanted to be helpful. And my gut tells me that the legislature, that the House is not going to budge on district lines. These are important legal questions, and maybe, of course, you know, as they say in the law, when you're asking an important question that doesn't go to the heart of the matter, the heart of the matter is the drawing of the House district. If you're going to ask an ancillary question, you're going to get back what we lawyers would say is dictum. In other words, it's an opinion, but it's not dispositive. It's nothing that you could base your legal action on. I'm not going to be able, and Tammy is not going to be able to do better than get dictum back from staff attorneys or from legislators. Because they're focused on something else, which is redistricting, and everything else is kind of, they regret the complications, but they're not going to resolve them.
I appreciate you on. Henry, Matt's had his hand up for a while. Matt, and then Henry.
I just had a clarifying question, which is, have other states taken the approach of using 2010 or 2011 precinct data in order to draw their 2020 boundaries based on 2020 census data? Or is Massachusetts alone in that?
I haven't the foggiest idea.
I don't either. Yeah.
I mean, because of course, all of us have been anticipating.
I mean, I expect, I expect, Matt, I expect that many other states are doing the same thing, but I really don't know anything for sure.
Okay, because, and then the second question I had is, are you aware of other towns? Because I assume the same issue must be popping up wherever there's a district boundary that crosses a town. So this must be, I mean, a groundswell. I mean, would it be better for us as Concord, rather than making an individual motion here to be in a collective? Because.
That's an excellent point. The Mass Municipal Association is a, and you're absolutely right, Matt. This sort of stuff coming from one town will have no effect. The shot here is if, is if a number of towns rise up, but here's the qualification. They've already done so. There have been protests, and Secretary Galvin has joined those protests now for three months. They have, whatever effect they had on the bottom line has been had, and we still have confusion. And we still have a significant additional hardship imposed on towns and cities. Do I think that there's something new here that hasn't surfaced in the last three months, and that will make a difference in the last two weeks or three weeks? If you want me to guess whether something's going to have a difference in the last three weeks that hasn't made a difference in the first three months? But you're flagging important issues. They've been flagged for some time. This is the difficult balance. The legislature is not in good shape either. These census numbers came too late. And all kinds of makeshift arrangements have been arrived at by states across the country as a consequence. We've had a pandemic. Now the rubber's really hitting the road, and Concord's seeing significant hardship. I think other towns are as well, but I know that the MMA has already made its case. I don't know the House Chair of Redistricting, but I am told he is a firm, I don't know what to call him, firm authority, and he apparently has heard the case and has not been moved.
Okay, thank you.
And then just in terms of the vote on this districting plan, I mean, I understand that the plan is coming from the House, but does the Senate vote on the plan?
No, well, we vote on it in a nominal way. Here's kind of the way this works. And now we are beginning to talk about some of the larger questions of redistricting as well. Matt, the House and the Senate members of the Joint Redistricting Committee collaborate on drawing congressional district lines. But by tradition, the Senate has no effect on the House redistricting, and the House has no impact on the Senate's redistricting. So that is a very, very firmly maintained distinction. There's a lot of, both branches are jealous of their prerogatives with respect to their own members. And so for, since time immemorial, the Senate's been voiceless on the House. The House has been voiceless on the Senate's choices. Both collaborate when they can on drawing congressional district lines.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So Henry had another question, and then I want to see if Linda and Susan have questions.
Well.
And we will take questions from the public. To the second problem that we're having. Go ahead, Henry.
Well, all of the, the whole problem really goes back to the fact that the town is being split into two legislative districts. We would not have this problem if the town was entirely within one district or the other. So it all, whether it's the technical problems, or whether it's the political problems, it all goes back to the splitting of towns and the problems they cause, and those problems are the technical and political and administrative problems that are being created. And I don't think that the issue that we have is is not to get an explanation of why this happens. What we need is to find out how we can change the result. And I, what I hear Senator Barrett saying is the given is the legislative district boundaries, and there is absolutely nothing that can be done to change that. Am I right that the governor has the ability to veto the redistricting?
Well, and I didn't mean to suggest, Henry, that the House and Senate have no ability to make changes now. They do. I was instead offering my subjective view based on the feedback I'm getting from people who are plugged into this issue, that, that the chances of, the practical chances of movement are exceedingly small. But I didn't mean to suggest that everything is written in stone. As you know, the one imperative here is racial justice. That can generate, not only, if you do it poorly, if you misserve racial justice, you not only can generate a great deal of ill will, you do generate lawsuits in federal court. So in the House, for example, a key effort has been made, and by the way, in this respect, the House redistricting really delivers. The House Chair has done a good job. And he pressed for a majority-minority state rep district where one has never existed before, but where he felt that the new demographics 2020, mind you, require it as a matter of civil rights law and the Constitution. So we now have a new district carved out in the town of Framingham, not too far from us in Concord. A heavily and new and rapidly growing Latino population. That had implications for State Representative Carmen Gentile of Sudbury. Carmine, even though he has a state rep district, represents, I believe, five towns, including several precincts in Framingham. In order to give voice to Framingham's rising minorities, Carmen had to have his district substantially redrawn. He needed to pick up precincts in a community bordering Sudbury that wasn't, well, Framingham. So the ripple here, if you want to talk about ripple effects, it's, it is interesting to identify the source of the ripple, the epicenter. And it's the majority-minority district created in Framingham for the very first time, which has had, which has had repercussions for all towns at the periphery of Framingham. So that's, that's kind of where this starts.
Right, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll also say that I think Linda Lowell is also pulling as well, because there were some changes that also happened in the greater Lowell area. And if you look at what had been the 14th Middlesex District, what is the 14th Middlesex District right now? We are sandwiched going northeast between Framingham and Lowell, and you have two areas that are pulling, and the major priority for the House, I believe and understand, just based on the conversations and the comments of the Chair, has been creating more majority-minority districts. Again, back to what Senator Barrett said, part of it is baked into case law, Massachusetts law, the Voting Rights Act. You know, we were one of, I think, the only states or one of few states that was not sued 10 years ago, because we take this very seriously, supporting enfranchisement of those who have not always had a voice and have not always been able to elect representatives who look like them and have had some of the similar experiences that they've had. So it does feel like it's definitely Framingham that seems to be pulling more, but I also look at the northern part, and it's also Lowell that's pulling in the other direction.
Thank you, yes. I agree with you. Okay, Linda and Susan, do you have some questions?
Well, I'm still trying to evaluate what is our best move on Monday in terms of what needs to be presented, and despite the odds in terms of change.
Okay. Susan, do you have any questions?
Well, my questions were more about the.
My questions were more about the, excuse me, this, you know, the splits of the towns.
Right, why don't, I think, I think we're ready to start that part of it. So go ahead, Susan.
Okay. I saw the 2010. Districts and it looked to me as if, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Concord I know was all in one. And I believe Lincoln was, was as well. It was in the district with Weston. And now there's this piece of Middlesex 14th sitting over in Lincoln when if it was flipped with that green and conquered. I'm sure the Lincoln people are saying the same thing. Why don't you? Why don't you make Concord or make us whole and Concord not, but. I'm not sure what the rationale was for doing that. And as Henry noticed, Chelmsford was there too. And I know there's a lot of, there are not a lot of metrics, but there has to be in the formula. I'm sure there's some priority. First you have to address the population numbers, then you address. You know, other criteria like ethnic makeup of the towns. In the case of Concord and Lincoln, I don't, I can't imagine there's a whole lot of difference in. In the populations of those two towns. So that, that's why I'm so puzzled that all of a sudden there's part of 14th Middlesex and, and Lincoln.
Actually, there is substantial difference, Susan. Let's, Lincoln has about 6,000 people. Concord has about 16,000. You know, and I might, I might add as well, I mean, you put your finger on something important, but. These ripple effects are never limited to one or two towns over. So if you, if you bring the, the lens back even further and you look at Metro West, you see something very interesting. Lexington, for the first time, is now divided into two state rep districts. Waltem is divided into two state rep districts. Lincoln, two state rep districts. Chelmsford, two state rep districts. Acton, two state rep districts. Winchester, two state rep districts. Woburn, two state rep districts. Reading, two state rep districts. It is impossible to follow one person, one vote, which is the constitutional mandate. And at the same time adhere to town boundaries the way you'd like. So. And especially in Metro West where population has changed a lot, where there's been growth because of the excellence of schools, I suspect. And then the presence of significant minority populations in Waltem, Framingham and Lowell. This stuff gets complicated. And all towns, including, of course, I represent only three precincts in Lexington. Out of nine and was elected in 2012. Only representing a third of my own hometown. So I'm a, I'm a product of the one person, one vote rule and the, and the necessity to split towns as a consequence. I. Find it always startling to see the rupture emerge in a new place where it wasn't expected. But again, viewed. From a larger vantage point. This is what we must do to get the. Numbers right.
Well, I wasn't so much commenting on that. I knew the population sizes were different. So much as the ethnic makeup of the two towns, I think is probably very similar. And so, so the town of Lincoln with 6,000 people is in two different districts. Has two different reps.
Right. I, I see. Matt on that? Yeah, I, I just wanted to. Sort of make a comment that, yeah, in terms of the socio demographic characteristics, yes, Susan, I think you're right. I think the challenge is. You know, we're sort of, it's the convergence in many ways of math and geography. Right? Like the districts need to be around 45,000 plus or minus 5%. And so I think, and then there's the use of computer software that's used to draw the lines. We draw the lines and test this out and test that out to see what's going to get us to the point where. We're sticking with the law around creating majority minority districts when we can, when it's possible. And also making sure that we're staying within the 45,000 plus or minus. I do want to clarify that Acton has been split for 20 years. And Chelmsford has been split for 20 years as well. It's not new that Chelmsford has split. Chelmsford went from four reps down to three. And there was one precinct that they had that is now in the 14th Middlesex, the redrawn lines. That had been represented by Vanna Howard. And she has taken up more territory, more precincts and wards in Lowell. Again, that's why I raise the issue around Lowell kind of being a pole on the northeast side. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know this is being recorded and I just want to make sure that we have. Accurate information about what has been going on in some of the other parts of the 14th Middlesex District in terms of the lines drawn. I do just want to also echo again, just what Senator Barrett said, it really truly is the ripple effect. And I know we, we don't necessarily want to just focus on why this happened, but I do think it is helpful for. You all and constituents and folks who are listening either now or who will listen later. To understand the pull of the demographics. We have had a decline overall in the white population in the state. And the population has been moving from the western part of the state to the eastern part of the state. So we knew, you know, back in, you know, earlier this year, I met with the Chair of the. Redistricting on the House side back in May. And we started conversations even earlier than that. And so we knew that there were going to be some changes. Western Mass lost a state rep seat altogether. So these ripple effects are just. I think are not, I know they're really frustrating because it's impacting. You know, how you'll interface with your rep, your reps in the future. But you know, I, I do want to reassure you all that. I've been representing Acton and Chelmsford with multiple reps in those districts. I do think that four reps for Chelmsford has been too many. I think three will be good for them. I think having two reps for the town of Acton has been fine. Rep Sina and I work very closely together on resolutions and legislation. We advocate for each other's budget amendments. So there's ways that we truly work together. It's not a divisive thing. It's, it's really in partnership and we always work in partnership also with our Senator. I have two Senators. I have Senator Eldridge for Acton and I've had Senator Barrett for the rest of the district. And so those kinds of partnerships are things that reps and Senators know how to do and know how to do really well in working together. So and oftentimes our relationship is, is yes, with our constituents. And it's also directly with the bodies that are elected by the constituents and the voters in your town, in the town of Concord, right? So we interface directly with the Select Board as well as the School Committee. That will not change. Those kinds of relationships will sustain because this is what we've been doing. So many districts have been, you know, contending with this and it looks like we'll have more. And as our population, as the state of Massachusetts continues to grow. I would anticipate that over time we will, we will see even more towns. Probably needing to be, be split or changed in some way, shape or form. Because it's just, quite honestly, just simple math that we can't keep. One town within one. Within one district. It's over time, it's just not going to be mathematically and geographically feasible. Thank you very much. So at this, if the board has any more brief questions or comments. And otherwise, I know there's many people in the public who want to comment. So I would ask people in the public. To either raise your hand or your virtual hand. And we will try to see everybody that we can see here.
Carrie, let me make just one comment. Looking back historically. This makes you wonder about the wisdom. Of the movement, probably 20 or 30 or more years ago, to reduce the size. Of the, of the House, of the legislature. And many of these problems would be, would be avoided had we, if we had more people in the House instead of fewer.
Okay, well, we are what we are. So thank you. Okay, anybody, I see Carlin Reed has her hand up. Go ahead, Carlin.
Thank you, Carlin Reed, 83 Woodson. Thanks for the presentation. Question I have is. Practical effect. We have a special town election coming up February 3rd that will probably focus just on a school. Matter, but then we have the general election coming up in November of 2022. When will this redistricting slash reprecincting take effect for the average voter? Thanks.
I wouldn't, I'm not sure the answer to that. I would defer to. Experts in local municipal elections.
Okay. My, my understanding, if I may, is that this is in effect as of December 31st of this year. But with the delayed deadline for the towns to submit. Reprecincting. Maps and physical descriptions. I don't know how that will change things because we need to have. We need to have approval by the state of the new precinct maps. And then that information needs to be updated in our. Central voter registry system before we can send out even census forms. So this, this delays a lot of things and will affect. How, how quickly we can get the word out of these changes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the public? Diane Proctor?
Thank you, Terry. And I'm sorry, I'm in New Hampshire and our wifi is irregular. Thank you, Terry, Senator Barrett and Representative Godea. This has been very helpful and I think our questions have been important. Who decides? How does the actual, and Carrie, you may have mentioned this, it took us a few minutes to get the wifi up here. Who decides how do we do to redraw the precinct lines? Is that under the aegis of the, the local town government? Is that under the aegis of the Select Board? How is, how are those determinations made?
Yes, thank you. The Select Board. The Select Board will, will vote to approve a precinct map and physical description. And then that gets forwarded to the state for final approval.
Who does the original drawing up of that?
We have, we have received draft drawings from the state Census Division. And then the Board of Registars working with the, our GIS analyst Jill Moon-Harren. We have been working on and will work again on what. What precinct lines. Based on the draft from the state will work best for Concord and then we will make a recommendation to the Select Board. For their approval.
So Carrie, the draft that you received from state, is that based on 2010 or it's 2020?
That is based on 2020.
Yeah, okay.
So we received some, a few draft maps based on. Population estimates. And then we received a draft based on the final population numbers.
Right. So I go back to a question that Henry asked in a while ago. Maybe we could get permission from the state. Would that help you, Carrie? If, would it ease confusion if the state is using 2010 for the redistricting and we can't? And we're going to get redistricted even if we try not to and we're going to have two districts. Can the town use the same 2010 data for the reprecincting? Would that help a lot, Carrie, or not really?
I think that would, that would help avoid splitting the precincts. But then we would have, we, we would not be in compliance with meeting the target population of each precinct within 5%. For three of the precincts.
Don't know if it would be constitutional because the census and the changing of. The, the districts is, is, I think, built into the Constitution. So I'm not a constitutional lawyer in any way, shape or form. So that would be a question we could ask. But I will say what would be helpful for me, Carrie, I have not had the privilege of seeing those maps. We didn't receive those in our legislative offices. So if that's something that you could forward along, that would be incredibly helpful. The ones that were seen from the state census. Yes, that would be.
Yes.
Again, back to Senator Barrett's point, you know, we as legislators don't, and the legislature don't get involved in the precincting. But it just would be helpful to see it. Because I don't know the population spread and the change, the way that, that you do and the way that you've been looking at it. So I would appreciate that.
I will certainly do that.
Thank you.
Let me, let me mention one, just a correction to something I said earlier. Monday, 5:00 PM is the deadline for getting in written comments from the towns. But there will not be another public hearing on Monday. So.
That's what I had thought. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry about the misinformation.
I'm glad you brought that up, Senator Barrett, because after today's meeting, the town may send in another comment. I mean, basically we have at least two problems here. One is the districts that we are being split. We understand the majority minority goal and we support that goal. But it's creating a confusion and hardship here. And then the second comment, the one that we've already sent in about the technical problems of administering an election. We may. Have to send in some more detail about that. I'm not sure. So who else in the public has a question or comment? Don't see any right now. Simon.
Good afternoon. Simon Cataldo, 40 Hosmer Road. Thank you, Terry. Thanks, Select Board members and Carrie and Dr. Van, Senator Barrett. Appreciate the explanations. So I think one, one of the issues that I'm having trouble wrapping my head around is on the technical question. Why can't the legislature redraft the precinct lines according to what we know about our current population data? But keep the same number of precincts in each district? So if we take for granted for a moment that we are split into two and three. Why can't they draw the lines in accord with what we know about 2020, our 2020 population? In a manner that doesn't actually affect the constitutionality of every given district? That seems to me to be a cleaner solution, both logistically and constitutionally. Then creating this double ballot issue, which I would respectfully push back a little bit. About whether there is a constitutional question there when it comes to creating so much confusion. I'm having trouble figuring out how. How it would be easy for people to know who they were supposed to vote for. And I'm an election law lawyer. So I, especially if this is an issue. And it seems that this is the case based on everything that's been said today. This seems to be an issue that may very well be present, not just in the towns that got split. But in every single town that has a population distinction between 2010 and 2020. So you know, I'd, I'd agree with what Matt said that there are other towns that have an interest here. And if whatever was done by Secretary Galvin and others to advocate for clarity didn't work the first time. You know, I'd humbly submit that maybe we, we try to press that case again solely on the issue perhaps of. Slight adjustments to these precinct lines by the draft, by the legislature. So that we can avoid what would be significant confusion for voters.
Well, Mr. Cataldo, you raise, you raise some, some good points. The, the answer to which won't be available to us by the close of business on Monday. So the pitch needs to be made in writing by then. And I think you are correct that the House could make adjustments. In, of, of any kind. In theory, it could start from scratch for 160 districts. Alternatively, it could. Take a look at the relationships in Metro West and conceivably make changes without. Those changes rippling out beyond Metro West, although that might be difficult. So you're correct that the House had other options. Because in theory, right, you could. Because in theory, right, you could redistrict in a state in a myriad of ways, almost in a limitless number of ways. For reasons that we're not privy to, the redistricting map that emerged is the one that we have. So you, I suspect that after Monday, a number of towns could get together under the auspices perhaps of the Massachusetts Municipal Association or the Massachusetts Town Clerks. And they could consider litigating. I can only channel to you what I'm hearing back from folks on the Senate side whom I respect. And that's a feeling that these particular arrangements, one configuration among a myriad of potential others would probably withstand legal challenge because on the civil rights question, these maps are so strong. But you, you are right. You know the law on this topic better than I do. And you could conceivably litigate. But I, I couldn't begin to predict what the outcome would be.
Okay. Thank you. Question, more questions? Stephen?
I, I, just to build off of that point, I, even in just reaching out to some of my colleagues in the area, there are some towns who aren't impacted and for whom this is a non-event. And then there are others for whom it is a, a big deal. I think what I'd like to get a sense from MMA on is which is the greater number of communities? I'm going to guess that the, the number of communities where there is not meaningful change and it's not a big deal is probably the greater number. But I do think there are enough communities who have precincts, re-pres ding issues that there, we should try and find out how many there are and get them together to communicate as a group through the MMA. I think there are some communities who really aren't fully aware that the new districts may create, you know, awkward precinct situation. So I think we will continue to do that. I, I agree with Senator Barrett. I don't think that Monday is the deadline. I think we'll have time to communicate directly with our legislators as this moves forward. But I would say that that's something that all of us should be doing as we talk to people that we know in other communities to get a sense of, you know, what's happening in other places and put together a list. I know Carlisle has expressed some concerns as well. So I, I think I'll do that on my end and will encourage others to do so as well.
Thank you, Stephen. I, I would appreciate if you contact the MMA and tell them that Concord is very concerned and find out what they're doing, how many towns are affected, et cetera. That would be very helpful.
I, I guess one thing, one thing I would, I would want to encourage because Simon Cataldo has me thinking. There's the original complaint that Steve Crane has advanced so well. And then there's the question of remedies. I don't think the remedy you're going to obtain is a new redistricting map that unites towns that resent being split because towns are split all over the state. I suspect that the remedy you want to ask for would probably be more surgical than that. I don't pretend to know precisely what it would be, but I, I would encourage the towns that get together, and, and this is an interesting development potentially to define the grievance precisely, but also cast broadly for resolutions on the re-pres ding issue that might be narrowly focused rather than boiling the ocean and requiring a new one hundred and sixty district map. I, I don't think that's likely to happen.
Right. So Stephen and Carrie, are you able to maybe take a look at that letter and ask specifically what remedy you're, we're, we're looking for?
Yes, I, I think that it's Simon's, you know, Simon's suggestion, I think, is, is spot on. Are there places where you can keep the district map almost exactly the way it is, but makes, I mean, if you looked at the maps that, that Carrie and Jill put together and showed earlier, we're not, we're not dragging lines, you know, significantly. It's really more pockets that need to be adjusted. And I think that's probably going to be the case in a lot of new districts. And so can we have some opportunity to make those tweaks really to the maps? And so that's, that's, I think, the question. I think there's consensus that that's the question we want to ask. Is that, do I see consensus on that? Yeah. So I think that, that's the avenue of Senator Barrett. I agree with you. I think it's going to be precise and not, not seen as an attempt to disrupt the process that I think you're right is, is really driven by increasing, you know, equity, inclusion and diversity in the legislature, which I think we all support.
Right. Right. Caution as you think about those lines to take into account what's happening in the rest of the district. Because if you play around with those lines in such a way, the district lines that, well, you're, you're proposing precinct lines, but then we'll change district lines. As I said earlier, it has that ripple effect on, are the numbers too high or too low for the district? And there's already, you know, somewhat, I think, small wiggle room. But I just want to raise that to help you be successful in thinking this exercise through and not feel frustrated that you spent all this time and you come up with something that works great for the precincts and then throws the districts completely out of whack because that will be a, a non-starter. I know that for, just based on my conversation with the chair. So that's my only offer of, you know, trying to, and, and other ways, of course, that I can be supportive in sharing this message. We're working on a letter. And that's why Emily Kibbe from my office is here, legislative aide, whom many, many of you have not met yet. So we will be, you know, amplifying what your concerns are and what your focus is. So to, as much as we can, just knowing what the constraints are and what some of the challenges are. So that's what I, that's what I offer.
You plan to vote for this map?
I haven't made that decision yet, to be honest. Yeah. I, I, I think we need to see what the finals are and have more conversations.
So let me just make a few comments then. First of all, I think, of course, in Concord, we prefer to keep one district. But we're hearing that that is really unlikely and we, we do in Concord absolutely support the majority minority goal and understand why this is happening. And so the suggestion has been made that we try to ask for a more surgical remedy. And I hear you loud and clear, Tammy. I think what you're saying is if we could find a way to move our precinct lines and even the district lines a little bit so that other towns are not affected and the whole state is not affected, but that it's less confusing in Concord. If we could suggest that type of a map, that might have some chance of going through.
We might have a lot more luck if we did it with a couple of adjoining towns. Because then we could make those adjustments among ourselves in ways that wouldn't affect the overall district population, would create more equal precincts within our towns and confuse voters a lot less. We might still end up with a few deviations, but fewer than we currently have.
Well, I agree with you, Matt. And that ties into what Susan was saying about, you know, some things between us and Lincoln because some of Acton, we're, we're the same demographic anyway. And so that didn't really make sense to us the way it was there. But the problem is time. I think we have to coordinate with these other.
Until December fifteenth.
Uh, I thought we only have until Monday.
Oh, okay. If it's going to affect the district boundary, that's true. And so that is probably not.
Just to clarify that, I, I think that we need to notify them by Monday that we're asking this question. But I don't think it's going to be answered before Monday. I think both Senator Barrett and Rep. Gueye have made it clear that there's going to be some additional process at the legislative level that this can be considered. But I think we still need to let them know that we have this concern.
Correct. But I don't think that we're going to be able to coordinate with Lincoln and Sudbury and, and others before Monday. And I, we, we just aren't going to be able to do that.
Let me mention just one, Terry, one additional point of clarification. The comment period closes on Monday at the, at the end of the day. But both the House and the Senate still need to pass these maps. And in theory, amendments could be submitted by either House members or Senate members. Amendments that, amendments that change the district lines aren't going to go anywhere. I think as a practical matter, for reasons we've already explored. But if there were amendments limited to this very vexing re-pres ding issue, at least they would be entertainable by the House and the Senate as they vote on the final district maps.
Thank you. And so what we will, we will try to coordinate with our neighboring towns and see if we can come up with some kind of a surgical precinct suggestions. I, I really don't know what we'll be able to do. Stephen, are you able to talk the town administrator in Lincoln, town manager in Sudbury?
Yeah, and I think I would, and Brendan and Emily, and if we could maybe connect, I'm sure you've heard from your peers as well in other, in other communities, that there's a way to kind of work the three of us to connect at some point in time and figure out who else is out there. The MMA has a forum for managers where we can email out questions. I plan to send something out about this as well.
Thank you. Great. Are there any other questions from the public? Simon, you have another question?
Thanks, Terry. Just further to Representative Gueye's point about not affecting any other districts or the the minority majority districts. It seems to me that we could accomplish that by simply, I don't know if it would be simple, but by having the objective of not changing the population, the total population in the two precincts in the north and the three in the south of Concord. And if we were to do that, then there would be no risk, I believe there would be no risk of affecting any of the districts around us. So if that's accomplishable, I don't see why the legislature would object to that because it wouldn't contradict any of the other goals of the redistricting process.
Simon, I would just say, again, very good point. But as soon as you affect other politicians, other state reps, other state senators, I guess in this case, we're just talking about state representatives. As soon as you affect the district lines of state representatives in adjoining districts, you're in a different ballgame. But still, what you're, what you're suggesting is interesting.
Okay. Does anyone else, please raise your hand if you have a question or comment? I don't see any right now. Does anyone else from the select board have a comment or, or Carrie or Stephen, if you have?
But I also assume that Carrie's group of town clerks can be working on this together as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
And I, and I just want to, and I just, my last comment would be to thank Carrie for, for her kind of seeing this right away and bringing it to our attention and giving us the opportunity to have this discussion and really putting together the, putting, really putting that letter together that helped raise awareness of this. So thank you, Carrie, for that work.
Yes, it was, it was Carrie that wrote that letter. That is very well done. Thank you. And I really want to thank Representative Gueye and Senator Barrett for taking the time to meet with us today and giving us your insights. It's not the news we wanted to hear, but we really appreciate the honesty. It's, it makes life easier if we at least know what we're dealing with. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us, Terry.
Thank you.
So I guess at this time, we all entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. And roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye, and thank you.
Mr. Johnson, aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.